2025, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Harrington McKinney, Langkella, Knox, Madison, Martinez Rutherford, Matthews, Mayor, O'Brien, Okovich, Pritchett, Tischler, Bervier, Bitterver, Duncan?
Here.
Evers, Field, Figueroa Cole, Glenn?
Here.
Ovindarajan? Ugair? Madam Mayor, we have form.
Thank you. As usual, I'll remind us that we're here to do the business of the people of the city of Madison, and I ask that we do that with grace and kindness, and in particular, that we refrain from using any profanity in our remarks, whether we are members of the body, or staff, or members of the public here to speak to the body tonight. And our first item of business tonight is a presentation from Make Music Madison. It's item one, Legisstar 88746. And with us this evening, we have Chad Moritz and Kathy Kocher from Make Music Madison. If you speak into the mic here, or at the podium on the other side?
Oh, that's great, okay. My shortness did not work against me. I like that. Hi. So, um, we're here to talk about Make Music Madison. This first started in 1982 in France. It was the Fête de la Musique. And it was a make music day where you didn't have to be a professional musician. You didn't have to be in a band. You didn't even have to be good. You just had to be willing to come and make music and express yourself. And it became something that took over the world. And I apologize, I'm gonna read because I have the attention span of a goldfish, and if I don't write it down, I forget. So in Madison, in 2013, city leaders, you guys, created Make Music Madison. And it's continued to grow, and it gets consistent support from the city and the Madison Arts Commission. This Saturday, June 21st, there's going to be more than 600 free performances at over 150 sites in Madison. What's cool about this is we're gonna join 26 other cities in Wisconsin, and over 2,000 cities worldwide in celebrating this day. We are the third largest in the world. We're the first largest, if you don't count France and the world in general. But we are the seventh in the amount of funding we get. So typical Wisconsin pattern, we do a lot with less. Let's see. Over 1,500 individual musicians are expected to participate, and it's all free, and it's all open to the public. We're the largest event of its kind in North America, one of the largest in the world. This year, my neighborhood association, the Hawthorne Neighborhood, is able to use the last of the grant funding that Make Music Madison and gotten to represent underserved neighborhoods. So we're having music events from four to eight at our elementary school gazebo, outdoors. Dear God, play for sun. And we've talked to the police department to come and distribute some frozen treats for people because we want to build those bridges. And we just really see this as an opportunity to create stronger sense of community in our neighborhood. As you may or may not know, the Hawthorne Neighborhood has, yeah, not always enjoyed the best of reputations. And we are really working hard to make it a place that people want to come to, they want to spend time at, they want to hang out, they want to move to. Any musician, young or old, amateur, professional, all genres. There's no audition process. The way this is organized is so, it's just so effective and so efficient. You register as a venue, or you register as a performer, and then you can, as a venue, go through and search and ask performers, are you available this time? You know, and you negotiate, and you navigate, and you, it's like online dating, but better, because it's only once. Do not have to have commitment. So we've had, this is our first time doing it. I am not a music promoter. This is not my area of expertise. It has been very nice, easy to do. The woman who runs the program, Mary, has done a great job, can't thank her enough. And also can't thank you guys enough for your support, because if we didn't have the funding and the support of the city, it wouldn't be happening. And it really is gonna be a good time. So, um, we were asked if we had a performer that would like to come. And I'd like to introduce Chad at this time, and he'll say a few words. He might even play the accordion.
Thank you, Kathy. Madam Mayor, councilors, it's been my pleasure to perform at Make Music Madison for several years, under the stage name of Squeeze Box Paradox. And as Kathy said, there's so many different venues and types of musicians that I can't, as a solo performer, I cannot possibly represent all of what they do. But I think the one thing that everyone has in common is a love of music, of a love of musical expression, and a love of sharing their music. And like me, I think probably most performers are non-professional. So when they perform, what you're gonna see is gonna be raw, it's gonna be live, it's gonna be fun, and it's gonna be your neighbors. And that's the Madison vibe. That's what makes it good for the community. One little anecdote that I'd like to share, from the first year that I performed in this event, which I think might have been the first year that it was held. I was playing at a neighborhood stage, and as I was finished and packing up my gear, well, actually, go back a little bit. During the event, I played a song by the Allman Brothers, "Ramblin' Man." But I changed the lyrics to, instead of "Lord, I was born a ramblin' man," I'd made it to "Lord, I was born an accordion man." And so I'm packing up my gear, and I hear a gentleman with his kids walking away, and he's singing, "Lord, I was born an accordion man." And that little shared moment, really just, I still hold that deep to my heart, what the event's about, and I thank you for your support for Make Music Madison. And the musical part of the program here, I've just got a little instrumental composition. I think this, I call this Highway K. I think it sort of shows off the lyrical capability of this particular old owner accordion. Thank you. And as you're probably all aware, June is National Accordion Awareness Month, and I'm sure there's gonna be a resolution further on the agenda related to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you to both of you, and I hope that everyone will take advantage of the amazing music all around our community on Make Music Madison Day. And I'm sure you all have at least one event, but probably many in your districts. So get out there and enjoy them. Thank you both for being here.
All right, our next order of business is honoring resolutions. Item two is Legisstar 88742, recognizing and commemorating June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth and Freedom Day in Madison, Wisconsin. I will turn first to Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Knox, would you start the reading?
Yeah, I'll be starting. Thank you. Whereas June 19th, 2025 marks the 160th commemoration of Juneteenth. And whereas June 19th, or Juneteenth, is Freedom Day. And whereas the day not only celebrates freedom, but honors and punctuates the quest for the civil liberty of freedom. And whereas Juneteenth, at its genesis, symbolically commemorates the end of slavery in America, and the beginning of the road to freedom for black people, which is foundational to freedom for all. And whereas a contradiction exists between the American ideals of liberty and equality. And whereas in 1865, after the Civil War, the institution of slavery remained in effect with many citizens choosing to ignore the Emancipation Proclamation. An executive order that was signed into law nearly two and a half years prior, which declared the end of slavery. And whereas the plantation owners, business owners who owned enslaved people, forced by birth and/or captivity as unpaid laborers and involuntary servants in an involuntary system of slavery from birth to death for generations, worked to resist and defy the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas on June 19th, 1865, under the direction of the United States government, led by General Gordon Granger, the United States colored troops, numbers 29 and 31, and a cavalry of 1,800-plus troops, arrived in Gaveston, Texas, the last city in the United States to receive formal news. And whereas the troops, who were charged with enforcement of the Emancipation Proclamation, advised the community as a whole that all are free, and that they had been freed by the proclamation two and a half years prior, and that, under the ratification of the 13th Amendment, slavery and involuntary servitude was unconstitutional and was banned in the United States territories. And whereas, symbolically, America gained its independence on the Fourth of July, but symbolically, all of its people gained their freedom on Juneteenth. And whereas, as such, Juneteenth observations and celebrations started in Texas in 1865. And whereas in 1989, the greater Madison community first started formally celebrating Juneteenth. And whereas the city of Madison first recognized Juneteenth as a city holiday in 2021. And whereas in 2021, Juneteenth became the 11th federal holiday in the United States. And whereas, from a historical context, it is recognized that the path to Juneteenth, becoming the 11th federal holiday, has foundational roots connected directly to Madison and Milwaukee. And whereas Juneteenth symbolizes a path towards several of everyday freedoms we often take for granted, such as the freedom to vote, the freedom of religion, the freedom to travel, the freedom to dress yourself and be yourself, the freedom to do business and be in business, and the freedom to seek and receive health care, among others. And...
Whereas Juneteenth further symbolizes the right or freedom for all to get an education, to marry who you want, to serve in the military, to defend yourself, and to be protected in the criminal justice system, though many of these same freedoms are being fought for, challenged, and tested to this day. And whereas the Emancipation Proclamation and the eventual ratification of the 13th Amendment nullified violations of freedom, such as the fugitive slave clause in the United States Constitution, which had required that an unslaved person who escaped to another state be returned to their enslaver. And whereas the 13th Amendment prohibited slavery and involuntary servitude, and the 14th Amendment granted equal protection under the law and prohibited the state from depriving life, liberty, and property of any person without due process. And whereas, despite these legal protections granted to United States citizens, a legacy of racial inequality can be found in today's criminal justice system through mass incarceration, racially biased capital punishment, excessive and disproportionate sentencing, and police violence. Whereas in Wisconsin, there are approximately 23,500 people currently incarcerated, and another 63,000 people currently on probation or parole. And whereas, as of October 2021, one out of 36 black Wisconsinites were in prison, the highest black incarceration rate in the nation, with black Wisconsinites 12 times more likely to be incarcerated than white people. And whereas while Juneteenth symbolizes a number of freedoms and rights, including rights of granted protection within the criminal justice system, there is substantial progress that still needs to be made to create a just and equitable society. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Madison and the Madison Common Council recognizes that Juneteenth is Freedom Day, which stands as a marker of freedom for all in the United States and provides time to honor those who have worked in community, to commit and engage in actions and initiatives promoting freedom, including the never-ending work of social justice. Be it further resolved that the official Juneteenth flag was raised on June 30th, June 3rd, 2025, which represents a new beginning in all Americans who cherish and stand for freedom and the promises that lay ahead when we stand for, fight for, recognize, and honor the struggle it has taken to gain freedom for all. Be it finally resolved that the Madison Common Council and Mayor recognize and commemorate June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth and Freedom Day in Madison. So ends the reading.
Thank you, Alder. And with us tonight to receive the proclamation, we have Annie Weatherby Flowers and Mona Winston. Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. Let Dylan come around and take a picture.
Alder?
Alder? Take a picture with them. Dylan's coming. Yeah, Alder, please. Of course.
Even though I moved away 12 years ago, and came back about three years to help Annie, and, but Annie is the one that has kept Juneteenth going for these past nine years, plus the time that we worked on it together. And I want to thank her. I really want to thank Annie for all the work she's done. I know she's talking about retiring this year from Juneteenth. I don't know if it'll really happen, but it might be time, it might be time. But I just want to thank you all for the proclamation, and I want to let Annie have a few words.
Okay. Well, I was listening to Ms. Barbara talk about the whereas, and all of the initiatives in the Constitution, and the change in state laws. We have, we, Madison, City of Madison, Dane County, is the only one, and I'm a part of the National Juneteenth Observance Foundation, we're the only place that raises the Juneteenth flag over the jail. The only place in this country where you can legally be enslaved is jail. So out of all the things I've ever been able to do with Juneteenth, that is something that I take at heart. Because when we look at the imbalance in terms of who is incarcerated, and why. But with that, I want to say thank you. When I came to Madison to change my life, I noticed that we were separated economically, socially, geographically. And one of the things that brought us all together was Juneteenth. Because on that day, we're all the same, and there is no separation. Slavery is really important to me is because every one, every, all four of my great, third great-grandfathers were white slave owners. And so I advocate for black folks in America to be looked at in terms of health-wise by genetics. I have Paget's. My sister has Paget's bone disease. Only white males get Paget's bone disease. And that is because those four men, one of them gave me Paget's. And so when I celebrate, I celebrate for now. I celebrate because I'm a product of slavery. And where we are today is because brave people stood up and made the change. And when I was nine, I was listening to the radio, WAWA in Milwaukee, and Robert Kennedy was running for president. And he said, "Some people see the world as it is, and X, Y." I see the world as it could be, and X, Y not. And that nine-year-old girl in 1989 pulled together all these people and said, "We need to have some place where we are all the same." And 36 years later, we're still here. And so thank you so much. But I want to tell you, with the whole new climate, we need money because we're losing sponsors based on this DEI initiative around our country. So if y'all do anything for Juneteenth, we need money, Mayor. Thank y'all.
Thank you both. So we'll take that as moved by Alder Harrington McKinney, and seconded by Alder Knox. Alder, Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. If you would please oblige me just for a quick comment. I just wanted to thank Ms. Annie for your years-long work. You said two things that stuck out to me especially. You said separated both socially and economically. And I can say, having grown up in Milwaukee, I believe your family is also from Milwaukee. So you know we got to experience Juneteenth at a different level. So I've experienced Juneteenth at the 10th level since my childhood, right? So when I came to Madison, I think your family was one of the most, one of the early families that embraced me both as a younger, I came here in my twenties, but as a younger person, as a person who was very interested in leadership. I want, I thank you for the space that you created for creatives like me, and a space for us to just complain, you know, to be able to call you and say, "This ain't right, this is wrong." You know, even if nothing ever came of it, you allowed us, and not just me, but a ton of other black Mattisonians, who are now black Mattisonians. We didn't grow up here, we weren't raised here. We were not like longtime South Side Madison residents, for example. We from, we're from the hood in Milwaukee, or Chicago, or Detroit. And so I just want to say, every year, you know, thank you for creating inclusive leadership, where you did not discount me, and you never excluded me. Even if I can't come to something, I'm always figuring out how to support. If I can't be there in person, by sending an email, sending someone also to support. And you have my, you know, I will again do my part to work and figure out how to support something so culturally relevant and important for the city of Madison because, because where I grew up and what I experienced for most of my, most of my life in Milwaukee, I know how important it is. And I believe too, especially with how our council is improving over the years and growing, I think that we will figure it out together collectively and collaboratively, and at an inclusive sort of way of leadership to figure it out alongside you versus sort of dropping it, dropping it. So I just want to say again, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me the time.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few things. Wow, Annie, you brought me back to Double Wawa in Milwaukee. Dr. Bob and OC White. But anyway. I really love the fact that I was a part of, starting Juneteenth, and Annie, you've been the constant, you and Mona, over years of keeping that celebration going. I think about when it first started in Milwaukee. I happen, my father was a photographer at UWM. And he started in 1969 what we call the Black is Beautiful Festival. And it was a concept he got, he saw it in St. Croix in the US Virgin Islands, thought it was a good concept. He worked for the Inner City Arch Council at the time. And a couple of years later, maybe the next year, someone brought Juneteenth there. And it was something that helped our community in Milwaukee come together, feel proud about our heritage, learn about our history before slavery. And, and that was very important to all of us young teenagers as we were developing in Milwaukee. So it was really good to come to Madison, be a part of that. I miss people like Diane Winfrey and Ken Haynes. And there were a lot of people at the time in South Madison that came together and thought it was important to celebrate Juneteenth here in Madison. So, you know, we're gonna keep doing that, you know? We're gonna keep celebrating, we're gonna keep educating the entire Madison community about the importance of freedom. Because as we know, if freedom is lost for anybody, then that's freedom lost for all of us. So just wanted to thank you guys. Mona, it's great to see you. And we're gonna keep celebrating. Thank you. Oh, and I did want to mention one thing too. I had a chance to go to Dr. Charles Taylor's Juneteenth book signing, and he reminded me of, some of us remember Dr. Ron Myers. Ron went to high school with me. He was a little younger than me. I was in, his dad was one of the principals at school. I spent many times in his office getting instruction, you know what I mean? So those are all great memories to know that we all played a part eventually in making this not only a holiday for Madison, but a national holiday. So thanks for your service.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to add, it's just such a privilege to have the two of you to set aside time to come and accept this recognition. You work hard, you put your life into this, and you live and breathe it, not just on Juneteenth. You represent what that is. And so we are so grateful, I am so grateful for the example that you set. I do want to take the time to also acknowledge the council office, Isaac, and the council staff, and also for former Alder Latimer Burris, who crafted this. And as I was reading it, I really felt invigorated because as far as we have come, we still have far to go. And that's one of the things I want to leave with this, is that, yes, we've traveled, but we have still a mile to go. And so thank you very much. We appreciate you. I'm complete.
Thank you, Alder. I want to make sure that anybody listening knows about the celebration of Juneteenth. So invite people to come and watch the parade, which starts at Fountain of Life and works its way to Penn Park. No, not this year. This year, the parade will start at the Labor Temple. Yes. Yes. So we'll, we'll start at the Labor Temple and go to Penn Park. And then there's a festival at Penn Park and lots of things going on. And just encourage everybody to join us in celebrating Juneteenth. And I also want to add my thanks to both of you, Ms. Mona, Ms. Annie, for all of your work in our community over the years and, and particularly for making sure that our community celebrates Juneteenth for so many decades. And, and thank you also, Ms. Annie, for finding somebody to pass the torch to and ensuring that this work will continue. We appreciate you. All right. Alder Knox, did you have something additional?
Yeah, I just said you may want to come to the parade. Are you coming this year?
Alas, I'm going to be out of town celebrating my mother's 80th birthday.
Congratulations. Well, we'll miss you on the motorcycle.
Yes. Thank you, Alder. Well, maybe you'll take my place. All right. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of item number two? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. Item three is Legis. 88745, Resolution Honoring and Celebrating the Life and Work of Former Alder Joe Clausius. And for motion, Alder Madison? Alder? There you go.
I'm tired.
It's okay.
All right. Motion to adopt.
And is there a second? Moved and seconded to adopt. We do have one registrant wishing to speak, former Alder Mark Clear. Should be with us.
I am. Thank you.
Go ahead, Alder Clear.
Mayor and members of the Common Council. I wanted to say a few words about my friend and former colleague, Joe Clausius. Joe and I were elected together in 2007, and we served together for eight years. The phrase "salt of the earth" may not have been invented for Joe, but it described him perfectly. Plain-spoken, soft-spoken, slow-spoken even, Joe cared very much for every one of the people he represented and always wanted to do right by them. His parents knew what they were doing when they named him Joe, as he was as regular Joe, a guy as one could ever meet. A few months into our first term, the state journal assembled a panel of council veterans to evaluate the nine new alders in our cohort, including one notable member who went on to become mayor. About Alder Clausius, council veteran Tim Brewer had this to say about his new colleague. "Nobody should interpret Joe's demure personality as a weakness. Still waters run deep with him." I found this to be a spot-on description throughout Joe's council career. I never heard him raise his voice nor utter an unkind word about anyone. But if he was dug in on an issue, there was no persuading him to change his position. You don't always need to vote like Joe Clausius, but we could all benefit from treating our fellow humans as Joe Clausius did. Rest in peace, Joe, and thank you for your service. And thank you all for your service.
Thank you, former Alder Clear. Alder Madison?
I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm just like so happy to hear that he was also an alder and super dug in. So I'm definitely in the right district. Okay. So whereas former Alder Joe Clausius passed away on June 1st, 2025, at the age of 78. And whereas former Alder Clausius studied political science at the University of Wisconsin-Plattville before becoming a lobbyist and underwriter at American Family Insurance until his retirement in 2004. And whereas after retirement, he decided to serve as an alder in District 17, first being elected to the Madison Common Council on April 3rd, 2007, and serving until 2015. And whereas during his tenure, former Alder Clausius served on the Affirmative Action Commission, Board of Estimates, Board of Park Commissioners, Central Park Design and Implementation Task Force, Committee on Employee Relations, Garver Feedmeal Criteria and Selection Committee, Long Range Planning Subcommittee, Madison Parks Foundation Board, Payment in Lieu of Taxes Pilot Task Force, and the South Capital District Planning Committee. And whereas former Alder Clausius worked on District 17 issues related to economic development and job creation with the construction of two new hospitals, UW East Hospital and the Madison Rehabilitation Hospital, and the opening of Wild East Town Honda, Madison's first minority-owned new car dealership, and bringing the Hy-Vee grocery store to the east side, turning a blighted area on East Washington Avenue into a neighborhood shopping and gathering place. And...
Whereas former Alder Clausius supported several rebuilding and improvements on the east side for residents' convenience and safety, resolving water quality issues at both well 15 and well 29, constructing the East Town Traffic Roundabout, and improving North Lean Road, installing permanent electronic speedboards at both Sandberg and Hawthorne School crossings, and the creation of the Bartolin Drive extension to Madison College and the airport. And whereas former Alder Clausius fully supported the construction of the new splash pad at Reindahl Park for east side residents and his nine grandchildren, and worked to establish the Madison Parks Foundation to preserve the city's outstanding park system for future generations. And whereas, since leaving the Common Council, former Alder Clausius continued to be involved with the city of Madison as he served on the Board of Public Works from 2017 until his passing. And whereas, he also was the vice chair of Madison Parks Foundation and was a supporter of the Reindahl Park Splash Pad, Warner Park Community Recreation Center, Madison Skateboarding Park, and Imagination Center at Reindahl Park.
Whereas, his dedication to his community could further be seen through his involvement as the vice president of the Clarendon Hills Homeowners Association, a volunteer coordinator for the Madison Concerts on the Square, and a member of the Dane County Youth Commission. And whereas, prior to serving Madison, former Alder Clausius also served for eight years as a City of Sun Prairie Alder, laying the foundation for his lifelong public service. And whereas, he had a strong sense of community involvement, often saying, "Being active in your community is not only rewarding, but also an obligation." And whereas, former Alder Clausius worked to make his community a better and safer place for all, and reliably did this work with a joyful energy and grateful heart. And whereas, former Alder Joe Clausius, through his hard work and dedication, faithfully and with honor, served the city of Madison. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and Madison Common Council honor and celebrate the life and work of former Alder Joe Clausius.
Thank you, Alders. It has been moved and seconded. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I will absolutely be brief. I do just want to say thank you to Debbie and the Common Council office staff for helping us to get these framed resolutions to present to the family at the service in which John and our Alders, Uguairre and Viver, and I will be at in reading and presenting. But I do want to say, I had no less than 10, if not 20, one-on-one conversations with Joe to help me understand the history of the Imagination Center and where we were part of a group of five or six in the appointment interview for a common council back in 2022, where that could have gone differently, where we could have been in conflict or something. But I reached out to Joe right after that, right after I got appointed, and he was open and ready to get to work with me. So to hear former Alder Mark Clear mention that, like, dig in, so now I better understand the energy that he and I shared because we were absolutely showing up to our one-on-ones with folders of information and absolutely digging in for these last couple of years that I've known him. And the last thing I'll say is that when I advocated to bring some of our library board meetings over to Sandberg Elementary School, who was in that first meeting? Joe. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Viver?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. I too wish to say a few words in tribute to our friend Joe Clausius. As you can all imagine, I served with Joe during his entire tenure here in these chambers. Everything Mark Clear said was true with many exclamation points, and I can't do as good a job as Mark in articulating and paying tribute to our good friend. I, I just want to share maybe a couple of quick observations, and, and the resolution does a beautiful job describing Joe's accomplishments. But the highlight to me in Joe's career is the achievement of seeing the Imagination Center proceed. As you recall vividly, Mayor, Joe, you and I served together on the city's Board of Estimates for many years, now the Finance Committee. For those that aren't familiar, that, that used to be the name of the Finance Committee. And Joe, early and often, decided that his number one request to serve the people of the north and east sides was a library. He reminded us early and often, certainly every budget cycle, that it was a library desert in that part of the city and that his constituents have to go elsewhere and have to travel too far to enjoy the benefits of our excellent library system. Well, I am so relieved that he was able to see the day, although he couldn't be there in person, but see the day and was recognized from the podium at the groundbreaking for the Imagination Center at Reindahl Park because he toiled forever to see that day come. And what a, what a blessing that he was able to see the progress made. It's just tragic that he couldn't be there for the, won't be able to be there in person, but certainly will be there in spirit for the ribbon cutting. I just wanted to share that, that memory. Obviously, it's one, Mayor, that you know, as I say, remember vividly, his, his championing a library for his people, so to speak. And, and he, he was just such a joy to work with. He was such a sweet-hearted a guy, never said a negative word to anyone that I know of, certainly not in my presence. And really, in retrospect, wish that we had awarded him the Jeffrey Clay Earlinger Award for Civility and Public Discourse because he's a living, was a living embodiment of that, very much so. So with that, I want to express my deep sympathies to his widow, Marty, and his entire family. And as Alder Madison said, some of us will have the honor of representing all of you at his memorial service on, on Friday evening. For those that don't know, the actual service begins after a visitation at Ryan Funeral Home on North Sherman Avenue, and that's Friday at 6 o'clock is when the service begins. So thank you all very much. And want to just say, Joe, we appreciate your life and public service so, so much. Thank you. Rest in peace.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Uguairre?
Thank you, Mayor. I have thoroughly enjoyed working this past 17 months on the Board of Public Works. And one of the reasons for that joy is learning and being mentored by Joe. Everything that has been said about his quiet nature but determination, I certainly saw and learned a lot from how he accomplished that. I, I will always remember a somewhat contentious group of registrants who had some things to say, including what I would call maligning some city employees. And I recall so clearly how he spoke out without saying a negative word to anybody but gave this ringing endorsement of the performance of those same employees of the city. And I'm grateful for seeing how that is done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. With the indulgence of the body, I'd like to add my voice to those remembering Joe. I, I really don't have much more to add other than that everything that my cohort mate, Alder Clear, said I think it really best. Joe was an incredibly kind man. He, I think many people perceived him as easygoing, but as Mark said, when he wanted to work on something, he was going to work on that and you were not going to change his mind. And I, you know, and as Alder Viver said, most notably, the getting a library for his district was the thing that I think we all saw that determination in. But he worked on many things in our community and in Sun Prairie as well. And I think that he, we could all learn from his, the way that he moved with civility and kindness. And, you know, he, he was quiet. He kept a pretty low profile, except on the things that he really cared about. And I appreciate that about him. And I send, I think on behalf of certainly city staff, and I hope this entire body, our condolences to his family. And I thank you, Alders, for going to be present at the service to recognize and honor the family as well. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. That brings us to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Then we will move to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Bitter?
Consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda except items that have registrants wishing to speak, items that Alders have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. Supermajority items, item 20, File 88610, approving Mark Park Commission President, Resident Appointments to the Subcommittee of the Board of Park Commissioners. And item 29, Legislative File 88351, amending the 2025 Economic Development Division Capital Budget by transferring $550,000 from land banking to TID 51 for the purpose of funding small business development programs. Items with recommendations different from the agenda, item 6, File 88003, amending Section 28.1839B of the Madison General Ordinances related to conditional uses to clarify conditional use approval language. The recommendation is to adopt the substitute. Items excluded are item 36, File 83477, substitute, creating Section 28.02200672 of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning of property located at 6610 to 6706 Old Sock Road from SRC 1 District and SRC 3 District to TRU 2 District. Also, we have registrants on item 11, Number 88325, creating Section 28.022-00715 of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning of property located at 733 and 737 North Meadow Lane from TRC 1 District to CCT District. Items introduced from the floor, File 88751, supporting Madison Metro Section 5339B and 5339C, low or no emission grant applications to Federal Transit Administration for hybrid electric 40-foot buses, equipment and charging infrastructure for the electrification of select routes. That will go to Finance Committee on 6/23 and back to Council on 7/1. Items with corrections, item 18, File 88148, authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into an amended view preservation easement for Merrill Springs Park in District 19. And the recommendation of the lead sponsor is to re-refer to Board of Park Commissioners on 8/13, Common Council on 9/2. As Board of Park Commissioners did not consider this file on 6/11, public comment will be heard when the file returns to Common Council on 9/2.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other exclusions from the consent agenda at this time? Alder Viver?
Thank you, Mayor. If, if available, I thought it would be nice if your appointees as our Director of Transportation and CDA Housing Director could briefly introduce themselves. That's agenda items 13 and 14 respectfully. For those that don't know, the Transportation Director nominee was able to do so at our last Finance Committee meeting, but the Housing Director was not. And I see he is registered and available at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Both of them are available, so we'll exclude items 13 and 14. Are there any other requests for items to be excluded from the consent agenda at this Seeing none. Let me go through that one more time to make sure that we're all on the same page. Items, item 20 requires 14 votes and will be recorded as unanimous. Item 29 requires 15 votes and will be recorded as unanimous. On item 6, the recommendation is to adopt the substitute. We will be excluding items 11, 13, 14, and 36. Just a note for those of you following along, the registrant on item 37 has indicated they do not wish to speak but are available to answer questions, so we will not be excluding item 37. And then we have one introduction from the floor, Legis. 88751, which will go to Finance Committee on 6/23. Legisar 88751, which will go to Finance Committee on 6/23 and back to Council on 7/1. And then there's a correction on item 18 to update the agenda note on when public comment will be heard. So just for the record, this is being re-referred to the Board of Park Commissioners. And so you'll be able to see it there on 8/13. It will come back to Council on 9/2, and Council will hear a public comment on it at that time. All right. Everyone's good. I don't see any questioning eyes. So then, on the consent agenda, a motion, please.
Moved to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda and the items and recommendations therein. And then we will go to public comment on item 11. Item 11 is creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning of property located at 733 and 737 North Meadow Lane from TRC 1 to CCT in District 5. On item 11, our first registrant is Michael Palmranning of District 5, to be followed by Patrick Terry, to be followed by Randy Christensen. Do we have Michael?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm Mike Palmranning. I'm a very longtime Sunset Villager, now residing on North Meadow Lane near the proposed construction site. I think it's important to say that, like the majority of my neighbors, I'm in favor of Madison's move to high-density housing. I'm in favor of this particular project, even after it ballooned from last year's originally approved 71 units to today's 146 units with 168 parking stalls wrapping around on the Meadow Lane. I'm kind of excited to welcome new neighbors into our wonderful little neighborhood. There are two concerns that my neighbors and myself have, which we need the city's help on. The first is the impact of the construction. On this matter, we haven't heard much of anything, I think. Don't know if there will be sidewalk canopies to allow foot traffic. There's a very popular coffee shop, a great Thai place on University. Gets a lot of foot traffic on our side of the street there. Would like to see that not interrupted during the build. Are the construction vehicles going to clog our little streets or will they be routed and sort of housed and sleep on the much larger thoroughfares of University and Midvale? We don't know. The residents are a bit concerned. That's a temporary problem, of course. Construction will begin and construction will end, but we'd like to know what's going to be happening there. The second and more enduring concern is traffic. A dozen or more of my fellow neighbors have spoken up or written in or signed on commentary at previous city meetings on this project. At last week, Monday's Plan Commission meeting, we unfortunately heard quite plainly that there is no plan for traffic calming. There's a very small sum of money reserved for unspecified future calming, then only on Meadow Lane. That is unrealistic at best. Our own traffic patterns here are from the incumbent residents and those are the people who kind of scoot through our neighborhood or a major connection point anywhere you need to be on the near west side, south of University. I'd ask the Council and the city staff to please materially engage with Sunset Village on these matters. I personally would like to see a lot of preemptive traffic calming put into place. Others have suggested a before and after traffic study to see what the actual impacts will be.
We've got about 30 seconds left.
Understood. I think the city should maybe get a little more money out of the developer for future calming concerns. I'm not sure that $10,000 buys a single speed bump these days, but we would very much like to see a formal plan and perhaps be educated on the impacts of this project if, in fact, we're wrong in our concerns. Although, if you've been in our neighborhood for about 20 or 30 minutes, I think you can anticipate that 141 or 146 new units are going to have a major impact. Thanks very much.
That's your time. Thank you very much. Our next registrant is Patrick Terry of Monona, to be followed by Randy Christensen, to be followed by Pete Harmatuck. Do we have Patrick?
Yes, I'm here, virtually.
Go ahead.
My name is Patrick Terry with JLA Architects. I am working with the developer, Randy Christensen. We know that traffic is a major concern. And as the previous speaker mentioned, right now, in plan notes, we have a $10,000 deposit for traffic calming measures. We've also worked closely with Sean Malloy and city officials on that traffic concern. The speaker also mentioned sidewalk canopies and construction traffic. A contractor hasn't been brought on for this project as of yet, but those logistics would be part of their contract with the developer. And also, they would need to coordinate with City of Madison officials with lane closures, deliveries, that sort of stuff. It is a tight site there. We did have neighborhood meetings. The first one was May 20th of 2024, and the second was January 16th of 2025. We did hear the neighbors' concerns, mainly about preventing pedestrian traffic from University Avenue through Bruce Court, which we have addressed with a privacy fence around the entire, on the south and west side of the property. As mentioned, we did get Plan Commission approval last Monday, and we will get final UDC approval on July 16th. All in all, as far as the motion in front of you tonight is the rezoning of the two lots. And regarding that deposition, we did get staff approval based on the CMU land use recommendation and the comprehensive plan and the explicit recommendation of CCT zoning for this site in the neighborhood plan and the zoning MAC Amendment request. It's consistent with the adopted plan, and all applicable standards can be found met. So with that, I asked for this zoning change to be approved. Randy Christensen is with the developer. He will speak next. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Randy Christensen of High Point Road, to be followed by Peter Harmatuck. Randy?
Hi. Yes, Randy Christensen with Walter Wayne Development, here to represent Apex Real Estate Holdings and the owner of the properties, Bruce Bosman. As most of you may already know, Bruce is in Apex Real Estate and Apex Management, had been around for 30, 35 years. He's been doing business for quite some time. He currently manages close to 3,000 different units around the area. This is a property that he's owned for, the two commercial properties he's owned for about 15 to 20 years. And it's something that he's going to hang on to. It's not like we're going to build it and sell it or put it on the market or anything of that nature. So it's a legacy property for him, and he's certainly wanting to hang on to this. So we have gone the past two years through numerous meetings with city staff. Alder Vitterver has been very helpful, guiding our process through this, along with city staff. As Pat mentioned, we did hold a couple of neighborhood meetings, and I have personally visited with a couple of the neighbors adjacent to this project, just to keep them in the loop as far as what we're presenting. And I have showed them the renderings and so forth as we've moved along through this process. We are extremely excited about this project. We think we bring a great product, especially on the TOD, Transit Oriented Development area, with the rapid bus transit. We think we bring a tremendous asset to the city here. And as Pat mentioned, with the people that live on Bruce Court, there will be no pass-through. We have a privacy fence going around the entire back of the property. So we want to maintain that integrity with those residents and respect those residents as our neighbors. So with that said, I will pass it over to Peter Harmatuck, who will run through a quick slideshow for you to bring you up to speed if you have not seen the updated project. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Peter Harmatuck of Monona, representing 800 West Broadway Suite. Well, no, sorry, that's your address, representing the project. Pete?
Hi, this is Peter Harmatuck. I'm with JLA Architects. And I just wanted to share a couple of slides to give you guys an idea of what the building looks like and how it's situated on the site. So next slide, please. This is a rendering from last year of the smaller project, which was approved. Next slide, please. This is the existing condition survey. So on the south side of University Avenue, you can see the two commercial buildings in white. And if you go to the west, there are the two single-family homes on North Meadow. Can you jump to slide nine, please? Thanks. Here's that view again, looking east on University Avenue. The lobby of the building is on the lower right corner. Next slide, please. Here's that same view at dusk. Next slide, please. This view is looking west, so Hildale's off in the background here. This shows the commercial corner on the bottom left with an outdoor associated patio. Next slide, please. Here's that same view at dusk. And this is a view looking northeast on North Meadow. You can see how we've stepped a building back three different levels to let the sun and air and light into the turnus and zone between this building and the neighboring single-family home to the south. And then last slide. One more, please. Just wanted to thank everyone for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Those are all the registrants we have wishing to speak on item 11. Are there questions for any of the registrants? Seeing no questions, then that is the only item we have public comment on. So we will move on and take up item 11. Item 11 is Legisar 88325, creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning at 733 and 737 North Meadow Lane. And item 11, President Vitterver, a motion, please.
Moved to approve?
Moved and seconded to approve item 11. On item 11, are there questions for staff? Seeing none. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 11? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. That will take us to item 13, which is Legisar 88487. I'm happy to submit to you the appointment of Christoph Spieller for confirmation of a five-year term as Director of Transportation. Christoph is here with us. And perhaps, Christoph, if you would just start with an introduction for the Council to yourself and your work.
Sure. Happy to introduce myself a little bit. I'm an engineer and a planner. I've been a consultant for 25 years. Also taught transportation at Rice University. I've served as a transit agency board member. And I've written two books, one of which is actually about to be published and one who's been out for a couple of years. So I've designed transit systems, streets, bikeways, all across the United States. I've done a lot of really fun projects, gotten a chance to do really extensive public outreach, worked with places to create visions for what they want to be. But what really excites me about coming to Madison is the ability to not just help create that vision, but to see it through. And I think on the public side, there's that ability to really work with the community, all the way from envisioning a project to designing that project, to building that project, and then to seeing how it works and adjusting afterwards and to build whole networks to get projects done. And I'm really excited to do that in Madison, where you've already done so many great things. The mayor's been sending me some reports, and I'm happy to see how well so many things are going and also the clear enthusiasm, which I can see here, which I've heard from the mayor, which I've heard from a lot of other people. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you, the city staff and the people of Madison.
Thank you. Are there questions? Seeing, Alder Harrington McKinnney?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And my question is, is that when will you be visiting the Transportation Commission?
I don't know that that has been scheduled yet, but I know that is definitely on my agenda.
Okay. If you can move it to the top of your agenda, certainly would appreciate it. Welcome to Madison.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Christoph will start on July 21st, so we'll have him at the meeting after that. Alder Tischler, questions?
Yeah, my question is, what's the title of your new book that's coming out?
The funny thing is, it's not titled yet, but it's basically about the geometry of urban transportation, how all modes of transportation from pedestrians, bikes, cars, trains fit into cities and shape cities.
Thank you. Looking forward to reading it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Okowits?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, future Director Spieller. My question is, have you had a chance to ride BRT yet?
Yes, I was impressed. When I visited to be interviewed, that was how I got around, and it worked really well. I also checked out the bike share, did a good amount of walking, and found it a really enjoyable city to get around.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Pritchett?
Are you ready for winter?
I've never lived in a place where it snows, really. So I've enjoyed winter in short doses. We'll see what it feels like in longer doses. But I am very excited about being in a place with no hurricane season, so that will definitely be.
Start now.
Thank you, Alder. All right. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. So President Vitterver, motion to confirm?
Moved to confirm.
Moved and seconded to confirm. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of confirmation? Seeing no objection. Congratulations, Christoph. You're confirmed.
Thank you all. I'm really looking forward to working with you. It's going to be.
Getting a round of applause in the room. All right. So that is item 13. And we'll move on to item 14, which is Legisar 88491. I'm happy to submit to you the appointment of Chad Ruppel for confirmation of a five-year term as CDA Housing Director. Chad is also here. And so Chad, if you would also maybe just give a brief introduction to yourself and your career?
Sure. Hello, everyone. I'm Chad Ruppel. I've spent the last 20 years working for the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, most recently as a director in the voucher office, supporting data analytics and voucher utilization across the country. I've served as the federal receiver for the Gary Housing Authority. I've also managed different projects at a national level, helping housing authorities across the country improve their public housing program utilization and occupancy as well as their voucher program, helped a number of other housing authorities reposition and sort of redevelop their inventory. Before that, I went here to the University of Wisconsin, graduated with a master's degrees in urban planning and public policy. And I've actually been a Madison resident for the last 11 years, working largely sort of in a hybrid environment with HUD, traveling to DC and to Gary quite a bit. So I'm very excited to come here, work my own community, and really help make sure that every resident here has the same opportunities to safe and stable and decent housing, just like I do, many of you do. Really, I'm very eager to help the city with some of the redevelopment plans and also help the existing residents make sure that their housing is safe and peace and safe.
Thank you. Are there questions for Chad? Seeing none. Oh, Alder Okowits?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chad, future Director Ruppel, probably. I just wanted to thank you for coming out and talking with us. I did want to ask a question. Do you have an opinion on small, fair, small-area fair market rents? Have you heard about that?
I have. I have heard about it. It was one of the things. It was one of the things I advocated, worked with HUD on quite a bit. And I think that, you know, I think it's always a fine line to balance using the most. I think the goal in general is to serve the most number of families we can with the money we get from the federal government. I think the small-area FMRs are a great way to help communities or help residents access neighborhoods of opportunity, right? Where they may be able to find better schools or job opportunities. But there's always a balance between the amount of money that goes into some small-area FMRs and then the number of people you can serve, right? And so it's a fine line. But in general, I'm supportive of, you know, using the voucher program to help residents improve their circumstances. That's the key purpose of the program.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, then President Bitterver, a motion? Moved to confirm. Moved and seconded to confirm. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of confirmation? Seeing no objection. Congratulations, Chad. You are confirmed. Thank you for joining us tonight. And you also are getting a round of applause in the room. All right. That will take us, then, to item 36. Item 36 is Legistar 83477, a substitute creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning of properties at 6610 through 6706 Old Sock Road. And to orient us on item 36, I'll turn first to Assistant City Attorney Kate Smith, and then to our Planning Director. I think that's you, Attorney? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Alders. This item is back before the Common Council pursuant to a judicial order remanding the rezoning decision back to council to follow the law in making its decision. Judge Lanford did not direct the council to vote in either direction and made no findings about the appropriateness of the zoning district. On remand, the deciding body, in this case, the council, cannot legally take new evidence. The judge included this directive in her order. Quote, "On remand, the city may not supplement the record with new evidence," which is on page 13 of her order. In order to comply with that, we are functionally moving back the clock to the point at which the motion would have been made when the item was originally before the council a year ago. The evidence before you is what was on the record on June 18th, 2024, and any developments that came after that are out of bounds. Zoning map amendments are legislative decisions that are made pursuant to Wisconsin Statutory Authority and Madison General ordinances. Under state statute and Madison's code, zoning districts must be consistent with the comprehensive plan and based on public health, safety, and welfare. The Common Council votes to approve or deny after receiving a recommendation from Plan Commission. Judge Lanford did not order the remand back to Plan Commission, so their recommendation from 2024 remains. It is reprinted in the agenda under this item as it was also printed in the agenda that was before council on June 18th, 2024. Director Tuttle will discuss the applicable plans and its factors next to table set the discussion. The statute requires that a zoning district be consistent with the comprehensive plan. In this case, there are also factors in addition to the ones that apply to all rezonings, because at this location, the comprehensive plan directs you to look at extra conditions, which Director Tuttle will explain. To comply with the judge's order, you should focus on citing evidence that you believe supports or does not support the rezoning and connect it to the rezoning standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Tuttle.
Thank you, Mayor. As Attorney Smith noted, the item that's before the council is the request to rezone the properties on Old Sock Road from SRC1 and SRC3 to TRU2. The staff report identifies the specifics around this request to rezone the properties, including why it was requested, and much of the detailed analysis that was reviewed by the Plan Commission. So I won't go into all of that detail, other than to just say that that staff report, in its original form from June 10th of 2024, has been provided on Legistar with the sections highlighted that are specifically relevant to the question of the rezoning that's in front of you. As you'll also note from the staff report, the project involved four individual land use applications. Again, for tonight's agenda, only the question of the zoning is in front of the council. I just want to briefly explain how the zoning question fits into the discussion that's in front of you tonight. As Attorney Smith noted, the city's comprehensive plan, among other things, makes general recommendations for future land use and development intensities that help guide physical development citywide. This future land use map is one of the most used sections of the plan when it comes to rezoning questions, but is certainly not the only part of the plan that can be considered. The future land use categories, however, are broad, such as, in this case, the future land use recommendation is called low-medium residential. These broad recommendations require specific tools for us to implement the plan's vision. Specifically, in many cases, this map needs a rezoning for a property in order to guide individual developments in ways that are consistent with the plan's vision. When applicants request to rezone the property, staff helps analyze from a number of zoning districts which could help fit the plan recommendations, implement those plan recommendations, and ultimately could be the right tool for a specific development site and request. The job of the Plan Commission, and ultimately the city council, is to determine if the requested or recommended zoning district is consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. When the council is considering a rezoning, really what it's doing is identifying a set of rules that will be applied to a site in order to guide and regulate development that will follow. Anywhere in the city that that zoning district applies, the same rules apply. This is different than a conditional use review process, which looks at the specific details of a proposed development itself and reviews it against a set of criteria that must be evaluated. Within MGO, there are 16 different criteria that the Plan Commission looks at. But again, today, the question in front of the council is just whether or not the zoning change, the district that has been proposed to be assigned to these properties, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. When we look at those general future land use recommendations, this site falls into a category that also allows the city to consider whether a zoning change could permit more development intensity than would typically be recommended for the low-medium residential future land use category. That decision can be made after considering a number of factors. The LMR, or Low-Medium Residential District, generally allows single, two, three-unit buildings and small multifamily buildings. But the comprehensive plan also allows for the consideration of large multifamily buildings to be constructed within sites within this future land use category after consideration of the relationship between proposed buildings and their surroundings, the natural features, lot and block characteristics, and access to urban services, transit, arterial streets, parks, and amenities. It's this context, the consistency with the comprehensive plan that was reviewed in the staff report from June 10th of 24. In the agenda for this evening, you have access to that staff report, as I mentioned before. It's the exact same staff report, just with those highlights. This is also the context in which the rezoning request was considered by the Plan Commission and is the substance of the Plan Commission's recommendation to the council, also from June 10th of 2024. So with that context, I'm happy to answer questions if there are any. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Director Tuttle. Are there questions for staff? And I would caution us to remind, just to remember the judge's instructions, that we cannot introduce any new evidence at this point in time. So questions should perhaps combine themselves to the logistics or procedure that's before us, or staff will have to answer based on the record as it was when this item was first taken up. So questions for staff. Alder Uguere?
Thank you, Mayor. I've inspected the table titled Residential Future Land Use Categories on page 20 of the 2023 Comprehensive Plan. I've got a series of questions related to the enumerated factors, some of which you just referenced, Director Tuttle, for permitting higher densities in the LMR land use category. And as I understand it, those factors are essential to the council's decision on whether rezoning from SRC1 and SRC3 to TRU2 is consistent with the 2023 Comprehensive Plan. I've got one or two questions, I'll try to be brief, for each of these factors. The first one I'd like to call attention to is that comment about natural features. Did not find a definition for natural features in the comprehensive plan. And could staff please comment on what those might be and whether any such features exist on this site, which would give us concern about the requested rezoning?
Alder Uguere, I would like to, in response to this question, draw attention to the June 10th, 2024 staff report on page 8. Under the discussion of these factors, staff addresses this point. If it's okay, I'll just read from the staff report. "Natural features. Staff does not believe that there are any natural features on the site or on the surrounding properties that would suggest that the building should not be built as proposed. While not defined in the comprehensive plan, staff believes that it would be reasonable for the Plan Commission and Common Council to consider natural features as those topographic features commonly identified in plans and environmental corridor mapping, where urban development may not be appropriate, including wetlands, floodplains, waterways, and areas of steep slopes. None of those features are present on the site or surrounding parcels."
Thank you. Another factor is access to urban services, transit, arterial streets, parks, and amenities. Most of what's there. I assume that urban services includes utility infrastructures, such as sewers and water mains, access to electrical power, and digital services. In the records we have been provided as of June 18th, 2024, there are public comments asserting that the city's storm sewer infrastructure in that area is so inadequate as to preclude the design of a stormwater management system on the parcel that would satisfy Madison's stormwater ordinance. However, as I reviewed all of the materials available at that point, it appears to me that the existing stormwater infrastructure might make a stormwater management system more challenging and perhaps more costly, but does not preclude it from allowing a compliant system of properly designed, which I think, as I understand it, would then make it a matter for conditional use permit and not a matter to be considered here for rezoning. Staff comment on whether I understand that properly?
Again, I'll refer back to the staff report and the sections that are relevant to the consideration of the rezoning. I don't believe that the stormwater infrastructure is specifically discussed in that context, though I know that was the subject of much discussion at the meetings. The staff report specifically discusses the availability of urban services from the perspective of transportation, as well as proximity to neighborhood serving and other types of community amenities.
Thank you, Director Tuttle. So another enumerated factor is the relationships between proposed buildings and their surroundings and lot and block characteristics. And if staff can display a site plan and/or elevations from the materials that were available at that point from the applicant, could you point out some things I noted in the staff report with regard to setbacks and other features mentioned in the staff report as providing some amelioration of the differences in scale between the proposed structure and surrounding buildings?
So what we're looking at here is a site plan, a very general site plan of the proposed development. This outer boundary here is the proposed development site. What we can see here in the center is the proposed building footprint with these small notches that appear between the wings of the building. And we can also see surface parking, driveway access. And these lines represent grading associated with above-ground stormwater infrastructure. Alder, I believe what you are specifically asking about are points related to the discussion in the staff report from June 10th, 2024, regarding relationships between proposed buildings and their surroundings. Staff note the setbacks between the buildings and the property. So what that refers to specifically would be the walls of the buildings at its furthest points, at the rear and sides and front of the property, so this outer edge, and its distance from the edges of the property. The staff report notes the distances of those different locations of the building from its property. It also notes that what you don't see on this plan is the actual footprints of buildings on neighboring properties. This also discusses the location of the proposed building in the middle of the site and the use of these wings to address the massing of the building.
Thank you, Director. Just another question about the relationship to surrounding. And this question is provoked by many public comments that we had back in that June meeting a year ago that were expressing concern about the impact of introducing rental property into a neighborhood characterized by single-family home, ownership, and the potential impact on property values. And I would like to stress before stating my question to planning staff here that I found no public comments in reviewing them espousing the need for separation on the basis of race or religious affiliation. My question is whether the 2023 Comprehensive Plan requires or encourages the preservation of creation of neighborhoods, segregating them on the basis of income or wealth?
No, there are not recommendations to that effect in the comprehensive plan.
Okay. And as a follow-up to that, is staff aware? Actually, this was a question I asked back then. Is staff aware of any academically rigorous study that finds property values decline when rental housing is introduced into a neighborhood characterized by ownership housing?
I'm not aware off the top of my head, but it's not a topic that I've researched recently, just to be clear. But I'm not aware of any.
Thank you, Director. I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you, staff. President Bitterver, a motion, please.
Pursuant to Madison General Ordinance, Section 28.182, move to approve the rezoning of property located at 6610 to 6706 Old Sock Road from SRC1 and SRC3 to TRU2, based on the finding that it is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and based on the recommendation from the Plan Commission that the zoning map amendment is consistent with the objectives, goals, and policies contained in the comprehensive plan. After the Plan Commission cited specific findings upon its review of the factors listed in the comprehensive plan that may allow development at a higher density of up to 70 units an acre and in up to four-story buildings in the low-medium residential category at this site.
Been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to touch on specifically the urban services component of what we're considering tonight and highlight some of the urban services that are available at this site and from this site. In addition to the multiple parks and a school within a reasonable walking distance, Metro Transit's R-line actually serves this part of Old Sock Road every 30 minutes in both directions. There are several service-rich and opportunity-rich areas that are just a very short bus ride away, including Hilldale, the UW Hospital campus, UW Campus proper, and the Capitol Square. You can get downtown in less than a half an hour on the R-line. My own bus route, the D1 on the east side, also runs every 30 minutes downtown along local amenities, and thus it can serve and does serve as my primary mode of transportation within the city. So I can personally attest to the fact that this is pretty good bus service that offers solid options for folks to get around. We've heard much about the fact that this site is recommended by the Comprehensive Plan's generalized future land use map. Plan's generalized future land use map as low-medium residential in that category, and it notes that the residential land use category table on page 20 of the Comprehensive Plan, that low-medium residential sites like this one are appropriate for up to four stories and 70 dwelling units per acre, which is comfortably more dense than the development contemplated by this particular rezoning proposal. As such, I find that the proposed density allowed in the transitional residential urban two district is appropriate for this site, given the low-medium residential land use recommendation and ideal site features that apply here. I believe that the standards for rezoning are met and that the rezoning supports the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, you care?
Thank you, Mayor. As quickly as possible, I'm going to recite my own findings with regard to the compatibility of the requested rezoning with the 2023 Comprehensive Plan as required by Wisconsin statutes and Madison ordinances. These are my personal findings, which I hope will be compelling for my colleagues here. And they're focused on those factors that were enumerated in the Residential Future Land Use Categories table on page 20 and further commented on page 2021 of the Comprehensive Plan, and specifically the factors to be considered in permitting the higher density in an LMR land use district. So with regard to the natural features factor, I find that the parcel has no natural features that would make the proposed rezoning problematic. With regard to the factor of access to urban services, including utility infrastructure, transit, arterial streets, parks, and amenities, I find that such services are sufficiently available to support the proposed project and the requested rezoning. With regard to the factor of relationships between the proposed buildings and their surroundings and lot and block characteristics, I find that the proposed structure is indeed of a different scale than the homes in the surrounding neighborhood. However, I find the compendium of design features provide a reasonable transition in scale. These features include setbacks well in excess of those required by zoning, the use of north-south wings and courtyards in between, centering of the mass on the site, relatively short walls, a flat roof, and privacy fencing. I also note that the site is not connected to the housing to the east, north, and south by virtue of the original development layout in those adjoining areas. I further find that the uniformity of wealth and income urged by many opponents is not recognized goal for the Comprehensive Plan. In summary, I find that the proposed rezoning of the property from SRC1 and SRC3 to TRU2 is consistent with the 2023 Comprehensive Plan, that the factors cited in the plan are met, and I therefore urge the approval of the rezoning. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue for discussion. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor on item 36? Seeing objection, we will proceed to a roll call. All those in favor of the motion will say aye, those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Harrington McKinney? No. Len Kella? Aye. Knox? No. Madison? Aye. Martinez-Rutherford? Aye. Matthews? Aye. Mayor? Aye. O'Brien? Aye. Okowitch? Aye. Pritchett? No. Tischler? No. Revere? Aye. Vidiver? Aye. Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. Evers? Aye. Field? Aye. Figaroa Cole? Aye. Glenn?
Aye.
Aye. Govindrajan? Aye. You care? Aye. That is 16 ayes and four noes.
16 ayes, item 36 will pass, and that will take us to the end of our agenda. Are there any announcements or additional introductions of items from the floor? Seeing none, then Alder Harrington McKinney, it's your turn.
This is the first time in my history that I had the opportunity to say that we are I don't even know what to say.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournments? Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good night.